For the 12th, 2017, we're at Rackliff City Hall, 411 West Lincoln Trail Boulevard, Rackliff, Kentucky. And this meeting will now come to order. Mr. Pike, would you lead us in a prayer?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Lord, for the day and all of our blessings. Lord, we ask that you bless those who have been impacted by the natural disasters in our country and in our part of the world, and help us to know how to help those folks in whatever ways. We ask that you give the mayor and the council wisdom as they study the issues of the city. Thank you for all of our blessings in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Fox, would you call the roll?
Baker?
Here.
Holmes?
Present.
Palmer?
Here.
Seabrooks?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Yates?
Here.
All present, ma'am.
The first order of business, the ordinance related to vacant residential property that was passed by the council on February the 21st, 2017 predates the move of the code enforcement officer from planning and zoning to the fire department. Mr. Pike is going to discuss the changes that need to be made to the vacant property ordinance to reflect the changes that moved it from one department to the other, and the updates that have been requested by the fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, the ordinance draft, and it's a pretty good working draft. It's not in its final form in terms of the style of it, but the substance is there for you to look at. And on page two, on section three, under registration, that's really where these changes have been made. You can see the changes are striking Economic Development Planning and Building Department and inserting Fire Department in its place.
We don't see it. We don't have that. We just have looks like a copy of the old ordinance.
I'm sorry. It's the loose copies that are... It's not your packet, I'm sorry. It's what was delivered. I just laid it out for you guys. I'm sorry.
Oh.
It's the one with the yellow highlights.
Gotcha.
Okay. So on page two, and it looks like this.
Okay.
Page two, and it looks like that. Yeah, and I...
I'm sorry. I studied the other one.
No, and I'm sorry. And I wasn't able to get that to you in your packet, so I apologize for that. But I wanted you to see the changes, actually have them in front of you. So we're... Since code enforcement is going under the purview of the fire department, the thought process was to go ahead and put the registration of these vacant residential properties under the fire department as well, since those really kind of pigeon or dovetail rather very nicely. So we've made that change in section 3A, and then we've made that change also in section 3E, which is just changing again from economic development to the fire department. And then, under D, we have a discussion about the registration fee, and then the question came up, what happens when the properties are rehabilitated? What happens when they're no longer vacant? And what happens when we need to take them off the list? And so there was discussion about what do we do? How do we do that procedurally? And so the thought process is, when we have a situation where the property has now been sold to somebody else? Because remember, these are properties that are being foreclosed upon, and there's either a foreclosure action or a deed in lieu of foreclosure, meaning that the bank, the mortgage company, is getting the property back. And so typically, you're going to have an abandoned property, at least for some time. Of course, we want those to be registered and to pay the fees, you know, to help us offset the cost of monitoring those properties, et cetera. So what happens then when, let's say, XYZ Bank gets the property back, and now they sell it to somebody, an investor or another owner? Well, how do they get that off the list? Well, basically, this says, when any such event happens as a transfer to a third party, then they notify the fire department in writing with documentation that is satisfactory to the fire chief that the property is no longer vacant, and the fire chief is hereby authorized to create documents and official forms for property owners to remove properties from the vacant property registration list. So that way, they can contact us and say, how do I get the property off the list? And Jamie will have a form, and he may want some additional proof of a deed or something like that. And that way, they can get it off the list and get back in good standing and get that taken care of. So that's really the changes to that ordinance.
Do we utilize this opportunity to do any code or safety inspections? You know, that property's been vacant for a while. There's probably some things that have gone out of code, some things that are no longer qualified safety-wise. So I know there's nothing in here about that, but I guess it'd be a conversation to be had with Jamie.
I would think so.
It's almost like we're putting the property back on an active list, and again, if that process was two, three years, I would hope that we would do some kind of safety inspection, code inspections.
Well, and not to get too much into the nuts and bolts, but I would think that once a property's on a vacant property registration list, I think it would be at least inspected from the exterior on a regular basis. So, Chief, good timing. Hello.
Come on up.
Come on up. Hello, and come on up, if you don't mind. There are some questions.
I was going to help answer that from our conversation, but I'll let you answer it since you're here.
So, Chief, we're talking about the reinstitution of property from the vacant property list.
Yeah.
So my question is, along with issuing a document from your department about it coming off the list, are there some process in which we would inspect that property and make sure that it's up to code, or at least according to its requirements and safety-wise? Because some of those properties have been vacant for years.
Yeah. No, there's nothing really we can do. We can do an exterior property, but we can't enter a property unless we have legal right to be there. Maybe somebody that's there that owns the property that says, hey, we're having an issue with the property, then we're able to do an inspection on it.
So my question then would be, Mr. Pike, so do we, can we, and do we need to write something in this that says a part of that, putting that property back on that active list, is some kind of inspection, required inspection?
And that too is part of criteria?
Um, well, that, yeah, I'm not sure you can do that by ordinance, and I'll tell you why. Because typically, what you're talking about there is an administrative search of the property, and typically, you have to have legal cause to do that. You have to have grounds, probable cause for some sort of search. Otherwise, I think you have a Fourth Amendment problem. And the fact that the property was vacant, you know, in theory, the property could be vacant for two months, and it's triggered on this list.
Right.
And, you know, a property's most likely not going to go out of code in two months unless it's a grass cutting issue or something like that.
So maybe we have to put the requirements up front. In other words, if a property's vacant for so long, then it has to pass certain inspection before it can be reoccupied.
Like a occupancy permit.
I don't think you can do that on a private dwelling.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm not asking attorney. I'm not asking anybody else to play lawyer. I'm talking to the attorney.
Yeah. I would be, I think that's subject to challenge.
Okay.
Because, again, the probable cause is what, we can say, well, it's the passage of time. There should be something that's out of code, or there's something that's likely to be out of code, and I'm not really sure a judge would go for that.
Okay.
And I think it's legally challengeable. And I, to me, the things that are more likely to happen would be on the exterior, grass or debris, or perhaps the gutters are falling off, or, you know, tree limbs, you know, broken windows, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
But, you know, if there's a water leak, you know, inside with a water heater or something like that, that's really not as much what we're concerned about, I wouldn't think, in terms of nuisance.
But I'm thinking about, as Councilman Palmer's saying here, I mean, you got a property that's been vacant for 10 years, and we've had some around here that have been vacant that long. Farmers get in there, they chew up wiring. And my whole piece is, somebody gets property, go in there, they clean off all the dust, they rent it out, and then we have a house fire, and it comes out that it was some kind of... I'm just asking a question. If we can't do it, let's march on. We'll deal with that possibly.
Most residences, though, when they are sold now, they require, the mortgage companies are requiring an inspection, a home inspector to come in and actually do the inspection on the property.
We may not necessarily be talking about a mortgage company. You might be talking about somebody who's moved away, come back, decided to rent their property or moving their property.
But then it wouldn't be a foreclosure.
Then it'd be a rental property, and then it would be obviously...
I'm saying, for whatever reason, it was on the vacant property list. It could be on there for foreclosure, it could be on there because the owner moved away.
Yeah.
So whatever reason, it's on there. When it comes off, you know, we have no idea of knowing, you know, the safety...
What's going on with that?
But if there's, if we can't do it, we can't do it. I'm just asking.
Well, and I...
Now, I thought all of this was just on foreclosed property.
That's what triggers the registration, is the filing of a foreclosure or the execution of a deed in lieu of foreclosure. So it's not just any vacant properties.
So only for properties that go on this list?
Yeah. If the property's vacant, then the creditor has to register the property, but not a private, like a landlord, for example, wouldn't have to register their property if a tenant moves out and it's vacant for two, three months.
No, I'm saying, whether the property's vacant and it's not a foreclosure issue.
It's not covered under this ordinance at all.
Gotcha.
We're keeping track of those now, though. We are, we are starting to find where the vacant properties are, even if they're not on the vacant property list. We're trying to get a list together of what properties that we have in town that are just vacant properties. So we should have that for you by, hopefully, by the end of the year.
Well, Mike, does that create another issue for us that we possibly need to look at? I mean, I know we talked about it before, but if vacant properties, and we have people that are, as some of the council members have said in the past, that, you know, don't live in this area, how can, how do we need to address that as well? Is that something we need to address in this particular ordinance as well?
Well, the chief and I were just talking about such things the other day.
Okay.
In some of our mobile home parks. But, you know, anecdotally, if you, if you have property that is deteriorated and rundown, I think it's pretty rare for property to be rundown on the interior and look very nice on the exterior. Typically, they're going to coincide. The deterioration is going to be both inside and out. So, you know, we have ordinances in place for rundown property. And in terms of inspection procedures and timing, it's really a matter of policy and of manpower, you know? But the legal concern that I have is, we go into your private dwelling, whether you are the landlord slash owner, or whether you live there, do we have legal grounds to come in there? And it can't just be because we have a good idea and because we waive the banner of health and safety. And those are wonderful causes. They're just not legally allowed in terms of, we have to have probable cause to enter a residence, or we have to have consent.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
They can always consent, so...
So one more question, and I guess we're saying, basically, that this only covers foreclosures and not the vacant properties, and then still not those properties that may be tax delinquent as well? Are we saying that too? It doesn't cover those type of houses?
That's correct.
No.
Yeah? That have been tax delinquent for 10, 12 years in some cases?
Right. Yep. No, that's, if you want those to be registered somehow, we'll have to have new legislation for that.
I think that's something we need to think about.
We'll have to have a Councilman Holmes rewrite his legislation.
I think that's something we need to think about.
Let me ask you a question, Jase. There's a good possibility that...
I would make it a separate one.
Well, that's a good idea.
Because otherwise, it gets confused.
There's a good possibility that vacant property will have the electricity cut off for a long period of time, and it would seem to me, before the electrical company will turn it back on, they would require an inspection of the inside of the house.
And that depends on the electrical inspector, and depends off the meters pulled or anything like that. If the meter's not pulled, and it's just a basic, just flip the switch back on, then no, they won't require that.
But there may be, the electrical company may require...
Yeah, I mean, it just...
Before they turn it on.
Yeah, it just depends on what's going on, yeah.
If the meters pulled, they will, and they'll check the box, but they're not going to check and make sure there's walls and the ceiling's intact. They're not checking any of that, just the electrical.
But it requires the, that requires the electrical inspector for the county to do electrical inspection before the, like, before the utility service will turn the service back on. So, yes, it will if the meter's pulled for some reason, and then, you know, that's what falls in that, in that... It really depends on the situation. It really, you know, and you hate to say that, but it all depends.
We don't have the, Mr. Pike has not completed the ordinance. He's just read you what we're going to do, but he should have that ordinance, to me, early next week, and it will be in your packet the way he rewrites it, when you get it on Thursday or Friday.
But it's going to look very much like this. I mean, the conversations about registering other properties and that sort of thing, that, I think that's for another day, and I agree, that should be a separate ordinance. That shouldn't be in this.
My question is, it states in here, the fire department. I think people might get confused. Should we say something in there about the code enforcement officer? Does this fall under the code enforcement officer?
No, it'll actually be going to Pam, my administrative secretary.
So the code enforcement officer has nothing to do with this at all?
No.
So why is it then transferred to your department?
Because basically, it'll be put into the system so we can keep track of what's what, and in that way, it can be relayed to everybody that I've got on staff, too. So it's not only just for what we're looking for, but it's also an informational thing. If the building is burning down or something like that, it puts it out to my staff, too. So actually, it's put into the system, and then it's put out to everybody else, so... Does that make sense?
No, not really.
Yeah.
I got yeses in there. Got no.
Because, I mean, it was under the planning, in, planning and zoning initially, in the code enforcement officer. So you have the code enforcement officer, but yet it doesn't have anything to do with the code enforcement officer. So why wouldn't you still leave it with planning and zoning?
Yeah, but we still got to, we got to still be able to keep track of that stuff. I mean, the not knowing. If it comes up there, planning and zoning, then I have no idea what's going on, so I don't know what to send Ron out. So in a way, yeah, it does pertain to Ron, because Ron's got to go out and inspect the properties, make sure everything's staying up to date.
So it does have, follow the code enforcement?
In a way, yeah. Yeah, it does, yeah.
Well, it might, but these, these properties are not necessarily dilapidated.
I know.
You know, they could be in perfectly good shape.
And I see the value of having the fire department, as well as the police department, know that the property is vacant, because if there's a fire, you need to know whether to risk life by sending somebody in.
Exactly.
Or the property's vacant, has been vacant, is on the vacant list. So how you approach that from a safety standpoint with your offices is another thing. Police get the call, they realize there's activity in the property that's supposed to be vacant. Of course, they approach it with a whole different mindset as well. So I see the value of both emergency services organization knowing, you know, what properties are vacant, how long they've been vacant, whether or not they've been occupied. So, great job.
Well, thank you. I need to say...
Any other comments?
Will we have this by Tuesday? I mean, next week?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, the second thing is the tourism ordinance. And the ordinance that was sponsored by Councilman Palmer, which will change the collection of the transient room tax from the Tourism Commission to the City of Rackliff Director of Finance, had its first reading on August the 28th, 2017. Subsequent to that first reading, the Tourism Commission requested that Councilman Palmer, the sponsor, clarify the procedure for the flow of money. And as we've looked into that, instead of a memorandum of understanding, the best thing that we can do is amend the original ordinance, which will require a new ordinance, and we vacate the first reading and have a first reading probably next week.
Can we, are we going to be able to discuss? I don't understand why we're even changing all of this.
Mike, Mike is going to discuss this with you right now.
Okey-dokey.
So, the second document that I put in front of you today that also has the yellow highlight mark, this is the ordinance that we read last time, the first reading for the changing of the tourism ordinance. But it's got these changes that the mayor discussed that the Tourism Commission had had input on. And the first change is, there in section one, it's highlighted, you can see it, where the Director of Finance, the transient tax will be payable the 20th day following the last day of the previous month. So in other words, for January 2018, by February the 20th, the tax will need to be paid into the city. And then, at the end of section one, there, there's a new sentence that says, "The City Rackliff Director of Finance will transfer funds to the Tourism Commission no later than the last work day of the month in which the funds were received by the Director of Finance." So you've got that timing there laid out, basically, to the day.
Can we add a word in there?
I mean, that's obviously up for discussion.
Because I think it needs to be all funds. I don't, I think it's going to get where tourism isn't going to get all their money if we are not very particular on how this is all written. So could you change that to, "Director of Finance will transfer all funds to the tourism" instead of just funds? Because that could be half the funds, it could be a third of the funds, it could be all funds. We don't know. It's not clear. And later down the road, somebody will say, "If the council wanted it that way, they would have put it in the ordinance." So I'm just trying to eliminate that and put it in the ordinance.
If you make that change to this, then let's say they have a budget of $240,000, and we bring in $300,000 over the year. After we get to $240,000 by giving them everything at the end of the month, by the 30th of the month, then we would continue giving them that money, and they would end up having an excess. So I don't think you want it that way.
No, I do think we want it that way.
Well, it's actually...
We could achieve the same thing, just by saying, "All funds until requested budget amount is met." So that way, if we get towards the end of the year, and let's say, they've only got $20,000 left to fulfill their budget, and we get $40,000 in that last month...
That clarifies it.
Then we would give them what's left, and then that $40,000, according to KRS and according to...
The city's keeping their money.
Right. Well, according to this ordinance, the city's not keeping their money. They're collecting their money. According to KRS and this ordinance, that extra $20,000 goes into the account, and it's owed to them in the next budget cycle.
Okay, but then, the tourism in the past, I'm assuming they still are interested in getting a building where they can have some conventions, some small things, and if we don't give them any excess where they can continue to add to their building fund, what we're really talking about here is the $300,000 that they have.
No, 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 no.
That's what we're really talking about, is how the city can get that money and keep it.
There's nothing in the ordinance that said they can't build, reserve for future projects.
So then why don't, I mean, why are we even doing this? Let them have their money. They collect it based on the law.
Right. So let me give you, and y'all can do whatever you want to. I'm going to say this, and I'm going to be done with this ordinance. We had an issue where money was requested that we didn't agree, that should have been gone. It was brought up that there was a loophole that said, "We're the taxing agency. We apply the taxes, so we should collect the taxes." But since we're not collecting the taxes, it goes straight to tourism. So it's been said by K...
KRS.
KRS, no, not KRS.
KLC.
KLC, that technically, that presents a loophole that says, "We can't really have approval authority over their budget, because we're not collecting the funds." I disagree, and we could disagree with that. Now, we can ask the Attorney General for an opinion that may come, may not come, or we could close the loophole and collect the money and give it to tourism, let them spend it according to the budget.
Or we can see what KLC would put in writing towards that.
Right, we can, right, we can continue to kick this down. Long as we kick this can down, that money is vulnerable. The money, and the money is still vulnerable.
Here's my question.
So my point is, close the loophole, collect the money, give it to them per their budget, and operate according to the KRS. Then that, there's no way to steal their money. It has to come through this body to get spent.
So this says to transfer funds at the end of the month, last day of the work week or whatever. Basically, we're going to approve their budget. We're not going to approve line item by line item. We're going to approve their budget, and they're going to transfer the money at the end of the month. Where are we closing the loophole for the, for what you're talking about, such as the, you know, the situation?
Because Jamie is saying, KRS gave the opinion, Mike Pike, I think, agreed with this opinion, that because we didn't collect any money, we don't really have approval authority of the budget and the spending of that money. Okay? If that opinion holds while we wait on the Attorney General, then their budget is vulnerable. So my point is, collect the money. We, we're the ones that legally impose the tax.
I understand, I understand what you're saying there. I'm just saying that if, if they're going to come before us and present a budget...
Right.
And we approve it...
Right.
And it's not a line item by line item...
No, it is. They gave us a budget just like the city gave us a budget.
Well, no, the same budget as they presented last year.
Right, which was line item by line.
And then we approve it, to a degree.
But we approve, we approve a general budget. We don't approve a line item budget. Our budget's not a line item.
Right, right.
What I'm saying, so...
It was specific enough to know exactly how they were spending the money.
Right.
Pretty, to a degree, but I think that, I still, I don't think we're getting the same accountability there. I don't think we're getting the accountability you think we're getting, is what I'm getting at. And I may be wrong.
Do what you guys want to do.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to make sure...
All I'm saying is, when I'm presented with legal loopholes, there's two ways to deal with that. We can get a bunch of lawyers in the room and argue for a long time and never get the loophole closed.
Right.
Or we can come out with ordinance that closes the loophole. We oppose the tax, why not collect the money that we impose? We impose the tax. The city does. So all we're doing is collecting the money, approving the budget, and allocating that money according to the budget that they submitted. I don't, I don't understand why that's such a difficult process to understand. And what, what, what does it, what difficulties does it create, other than creating another level of accountability? Because now the Tourism Commission is accountable for the budget and how that money is spent. And now the city council is accountable. And there is no loophole that says, "Well, technically, you guys really can't approve this, or can, technically, you guys can't deny this, because technically, you guys didn't collect the money." But we closed that loophole. And if the budget wasn't, wasn't satisfactory when we got it, what was the problem with it? Why didn't we say something then? It was clear to me. I don't understand what was ambiguous about that budget.
I don't think anybody had a question with the budget. I don't think that was a question. My point with it is, to, when Mr. Weaver came in to office, then he was reading over the KRSs and said, "We needed to approve their budget," which in the past, we had. And from what I understand, tourism has always sent that budget towards, to us, to approve. And for some reason, I don't know what the reason was, but for some reason, it wouldn't get in with our budget and get approved. Somehow, along the line, it got dropped. That, that's on us. So why don't we go back again and just do it that way? But the reason this is a concern is somebody who's read the ordinances, or the KL...
KRS.
KRSs, and by their interpretation of them is saying, saying this, but the KRSs haven't changed. We need to go back and approve their budget, just like we had been for years and years We need to go back and approve their budget, just like we had been for years and years and years, when they started in nineteen eighty-eight. And they approve their budget, they bring it to us, we approve it, they still collect their money, they do it, they can have their savings, they can, you know, have their building fund. And the city, um, still has a final say as far as amendments and what they're gonna do on their budget.
So, are, are we looking-
But does that put us out of compliance with the KRS if it's having a loophole?
No, it depends how you read it. There's plenty of-
So, so, let's ask the attorney, how does it read?
Well, one year it read one way and then the next year it read the other.
Okay, let's, let's not have ten people talking at once. They have a question for Mike Pike.
Yeah, let me, let me just back up and, and tell you what I think. I think what the, what the city needs to do is you need to figure out how you want the tourism money to be allocated to the Tourism Commission. If you want to collect the money, uh, from, uh, the tax collectors basically, and then distribute that money to tourism based on their budget. So, they ask for two hundred and forty thousand, you give them two forty. Uh, the, the statute actually says if they have money left over in their budget and they don't spend it for their fiscal year, then that money carries over to the next year. It doesn't say excess tax above and beyond the budget goes to them. So, it does, the law doesn't actually say that. There really is no legal authority for the commission to establish a reserve account. If you want them to do that and allow them to do that, I think you probably can. Uh, in fact, I, I know you can, but there's really no automatic provision for that. So, to me, the, the issues you have to deal with are, uh, where does the money get paid initially? Uh, and then how do you allocate that to the Tourism Commission? Do you, let's use the three hundred, two forty example that we've spoken of already, where we collect three hundred thousand in tax in, in a year and the tourism budget is two forty. So, you have an excess of sixty thousand in that example. So, what do you do with the sixty thousand? Give it to them for reserves, so they have a capital improvement fund. Do you put that aside for the city? If you do, the statute says you must put that in a tourism type account, it has to be segregated, it can't be used in the general fund. Has to be used for tourism activities, um, parks and that sort of thing that, that add to tourism, the statute's very clear on that, what you can use it for. So, once you figure out the mechanics of all that and really the policy and the purpose, then we can draft an ordinance. I don't know if that clears things, but I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
It's like storm, it's like stormwater money. So, it sounds like we need to add to this, so, so I'm, I'm okay with pulling this right now. Sounds like we need to add a piece in there that allows them to have that reserve fund for the purpose of future projects or future capital projects, we need that in there. And then we need that piece in there that keeps the integrity of all excess money in the Tourism Commission, that it never becomes-
That's in there.
Except, right. I thought that's what I'm reading right there, when it says it goes back to that budget. So, we need to add that piece with the allowance, the allotment of capital reserve, of reserve funds for future capital projects.
Specify what it's used for.
I wanna make sure that that's protected. The intent is not to create an opportunity for any monies to be taken out of tourism. The intent is to make sure that this body has the ultimate accountability for those funds. And, and, and I cannot begin to try to write an ordinance to, to get at the perception of intent. So, Mike Pike brings up a, a, a valid point, which this is the first I'm hearing about, being able to take reserves. So, if we can add that piece in there, and then I'll represent this, uh, in next month if it's okay. But if we can add that piece in there that keeps, again, that reserve and allows for them to have a reserve fund for future capital projects and it remains in an account for tourism for that purpose, then I'm, I'm good with that. I don't want there to be any, um, any loopholes that takes their money, monies that are collected for tourism, and somehow ends up being money that the city has managed.
So, you want all the tourism, uh, tags to basically pass through to the Tourism Commission?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and, and any, again, any monies that are not passing through because it exceeds the budget according to the ordinance and according to KRS-
Will still go to them.
Stays, stays in the account for tourism, but it is allocated towards the next year budget and/or is put in a reserve fund for future capital projects.
That they are gonna do, right?
I just wanna add that piece cause you just brought that up, that we can authorize them to have.
There's one other thing that you haven't taken into consideration. Another part of the KRS says, "Any excess funds that are in this special account for tourism to be spent for anything other than what they want to spend it for has to be decided on in coordination with the Tourism Commission and the City Council."
Right.
Let's, it, let's say you had a hundred thousand dollars of extra money over a period of time and you wanted to do something with your parks. You can't do that and they can't do that, but together you can. So, there's a mechanism for where all this excess money goes. It's not, it, it cannot be spent on anything other than tourism and tourism and city council approved projects.
Right.
It's the only way it can be spent.
And putting that in there identified on.
Then it goes into special funds already in your ordinance.
Right, so, so, can you add that piece about-
But the special fund would be under tourism. It's not, Chance is not going to be over the special funds, tourism would be over the special funds.
Chance is, Chance collects that money and maintains it.
So, then tourism's still not getting their money, that's the thing.
No, it's, it's, it's where their accounts are, Barbara, all Chance, Chance doesn't have a pocketbook with their money in it. It goes into an account that is designated for tourism. This ordinance establishes the movement of that money, so Chance can't just go take that money and move it. I'll be the first one calling for his head. He can't just go take money out of accounts and do what he wants to do with them. I, I, I don't, I don't, I, I mean, and I don't have a problem, if I think something's wrong, I have a problem telling you somebody's a crook. So, it goes in an account, the account the ordinance establishes that either goes towards their current year budget or carries over to their future year budget, or we're allowing them to move money from that budgeted account, excess money from that budgeted account, to a, a, um, reserve account for future capital projects, right? I, I don't, I don't, I don't get it, I don't, I don't understand what the other nuance is. Now, now, there is a problem, if, if we're growing as a city and we went from collecting one million to two million next year and tourism hasn't adjusted. And I don't, I don't foresee that happening, I, I have all the confidence that they're gonna create two million dollar worth of tourism activities and next year's budget's gonna reflect that increase. So, I don't think we have a whole, we should have a whole lot of conversation around access. But I agree with the mayor, by putting it in an ordinance and making it all flow through this body, there has to now be a collaboration, not just with the mayor's office, but with the City Council and with the Tourism Commission.
The collaboration is specifically City Council, not the mayor's office.
Right, so there's six other individuals that are a part of discussing what needs to happen with access.
I, I wanna make sure that there's no intention, cause it, it doesn't say in here, so I, I, I don't think there's any intention.
Well, I think we're gonna get a whole new thing, it's gonna tell us different words.
Well, I just wanna make sure that there's gonna be no admin fees for this, we're not gonna charge the-
No, I haven't, no, no.
Yeah, I, I didn't see it in here, but I wanted to make sure that, you know. No, it's, the ordinance doesn't allow that.
No.
I just wanted to make sure that-
That's why I wanted it to say all, every penny, if we collect whatever, every penny goes straight to them, so I don't really see the benefit. But, um, the other question is, what about the money they have now? We won't have that. They have that in, I think it's in CDs and, and different things, is that right? Charlie, or Bob, Bob's the treasurer. So, they already have that in CDs in their accounts. What happens with that? If we're keeping the excess from this year, how are we gonna address the previous years? It needs to be in there, I'm not sure how you wanna do it, but it needs to be taken care of too, so we don't have loose ends. And again, they'll say, "Well, if the council wanted it that way, they would've put it in there."
How about if we rewrite this ordinance for you, Councilwoman Palmer?
He did say bring back next month, right?
And then we coordinate the, the, the new ordinance with those three people who are sitting right there and see if-
So, I will, I will, along with the mayor, coordinate a time to sit down, uh, Mr. Farley and, um, Kelly and, and Bob and the mayor and all the council members, uh, that are able, we'll split it up. And let's have a conversation and let's put this horse to rest. But I think we need to have an ordinance in place to make sure that this body has total accountability for that funds. If any, if, if enough of you guys disagree with that, then we can withdraw the ordinance, we can leave it as it is. But the, the idea and the possibility of a loophole being present has been brought up. And I'm saying let's have an ironclad ordinance that protects the Tourism Commission, that protects the dollars in that they stay in the vein in which they were intended to go. So, we'll, we'll do that, we'll sit down and have a conversation.
Three, one, and one.
Three, one, and one.
Let me, let me ask you a question.
And, and one more, Mike Pike.
Let, let me, let me ask, so i- in our number example where we had three hundred thousand and two forty, so for the fiscal year, let's say we have an excess of sixty grand that's collected. Where is the sixty grand going?
According to section two, should the commission, well, let me see, his second statement.
I haven't even gotten a chance to read it.
Um, "Money not expended by the commission from the budget approved by the City Council during any fiscal year shall be used to make up part of the commission's budget for the next fiscal year." So, if they submitted-
That, but that's different.
But that's all we've been in there.
That, that is, let's say we budgeted two forty for them and gave them two forty and they spent two hundred.
Right.
That means the forty thousand from that example, that goes to their budget, not the excess funds, the excess of the-
So, we need to add a statement in that said not expended funds also.
Correct, we, we need excess funds-
Right.
That are above and beyond their budget requisition.
Right.
So, the question is, what do we do with that? Do we, do we put that in a, in a tourism earmarked account here that Chance has that on the ledger? But it's obviously money that has to be spent in the future for tourism purposes in coordination with tourism and the City Council.
So, can we add that to this same statement?
But I'm asking, is that what you want done with that money?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But see, the problem with that is-
Would you guys agree?
Well, I wouldn't agree yet.
Tourism, no, I'm saying, would you guys agree that that's what we want to do? See, if something happens, let's say y'all were scheduled to give forty thousand dollars to me for a big event, and then we had tornadoes and the event got canceled. Now, at the end of the year, you got that forty thousand in your budget. I'm saying the ordinance should say, carry that over for next year's budget as well.
But I don't think anybody should agree until we get the new wording.
No, I'm, we're just talking about wording here. So, I'm saying that we should put in this ordinance that along with extra money collected, any excess money that didn't get spent, carries over in next year's budget. Now, understand something, I think our Tourism Commission has operated at a level of professionalism and fiscal responsibility that they would realize that if they budgeted three hundred thousand, because in the previous year we collected three hundred thousand and at the end of the year there was actually three hundred and fifty, that next year they'll submit a budget for three hundred and fifty. And, and that, that possibility of there being that much access is probably because something major that was supposed to happen didn't happen. You know, we could sit here and, and never get anything done, talking about every simple scenario. The reality is I trust the professionalism of these people, that they're gonna adjust their vision and their plan to expand with the expansion of resources. And so, I don't think we're gonna have a big problem with them not spending money. I would say to them right here in their presence, that if they go year in, year out with a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars on the books, something's wrong and then, yeah, we probably do need to look at some extra oversight, but I don't foresee that happening. I've seen them being very progressive and, 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 and growing with the increase of resources. So, if we can cover the excess money and the excess, excess taxes collected to be carried over into next year's budget, I think that'll protect all their funds along with the caveat of having, um, the ability to have a reserve account for future capital expenses.
Would you agree that before we move forward on this and have the first reading of anything, we need to have the meeting that you suggested with Kelly and Charlie and Bob, you, me, and Mike Pike to iron this out?
Yes.
I have to, I have about two more things because I'm sure I won't be at that meeting. The problem, one of the problems is I'm listening to this-
Would you like to be at that meeting?
I would like to be at that meeting. If we're collecting the money, then we're collecting the interest.
That account's collecting the interest.
Well, that account, but it won't be the city's money, cause it's in the City of Ragcliffe's name.
I wouldn't think so.
So, we wanna make sure that the tourism gets any interest that's collected. Also, that's why I don't understand why you don't just give them all the money and then they have to save it anyway, anything above their budget.
There is no interest on the first two hundred and forty thousand. No, no, the CDs and stuff, we wouldn't be trying to take, I mean- The interest would stay in that account. Yeah, all the, all, yeah, all the money goes to them. This is not general funds.
And then my other suggestion, because on the back of this, and I'll have to read where we are, but, um, on the back of this, it says, "This ordinance shall become effective January one, two thousand and eighteen." Logically, to me, since we're creating this in the middle of their budget cycle, it needs to be at the end of, beginning the next fiscal year, July first. That way, this budget works as it is and then come the next budget system, cycle, they will know what's expected, they'll be able to plan their budget better. And, and that way, it's just cleaner, to just start all at the new budget cycle. So, I would think that would definitely be something we would wanna do that.
Did you guys negotiate this date of January one? Anybody know why that?
January one.
What was written was that at the conclusion of the second reading, it became effective instantly, and there's transition time required.
Right.
So, we need some room and the, the January first was thrown out as a possible date, so that, that was all part of your negotiations on how you guys wanted to do it.
Okay, so, so, we, so if we get this, so if we get this done and we put the effective date all the way to Jan- July one, then it leaves that vulnerability piece for the rest of the year is there. Whatever the loopholes that existed before we started having this discussion, they stay in, in effect until July one. Okay? So, we can talk about that and we can talk about what it looks like, and if y'all can work with January one and we can make that happen, then we'll have a conversation with Councilwoman Baker and any others that have questions. If we can't make it happen, then we'll just leave things as is until July one of two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, I believe we could probably spend another thirty minutes on this, but I don't think it's necessary. So, let's move-
Well, it's a lot of money, so it probably is.
Let's move to the next item. And I have given, just passed out this photograph, two photographs to all of you. And so, what you have before there is a photograph of a mobile home park at Golden Rainbow. And you have a before and an after of the same mobile home. And I'm showing that to you to show you the progress we have made in that mobile home park since the fire department has taken over code enforcement and using all of the ordinances for code enforcement, all of the KRSs for code enforcement and all of the KRSs, the fire department. And that's the kind of thing that can be accomplished. I could show you the same kind of photographs of before and after of Ragcliffe Transmission. But Ragcliffe Transmission hasn't made that much progress, but it's made a whole lot.
They've made a whole lot of progress.
A whole lot. So, that's the only reason I put that in there for you to see.
It's good, Jamie.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the next thing we're moving on to is the website. Last month, Tim Jeffries and J.J. Duval joined me in a discussion with Heartland Communications concerning the design of a new website for the City of Ragcliffe. And last Thursday, Tim Jeffries and J.J. Duval and Councilwoman Seabrook joined me to hear Heartland Communications propose. Now, Heartland Communication is a full-service website developer with successful contracts throughout Hardin County to include Hardin County government. And by full service, I mean they offer the video, the graphics, the marketing, plus a mobile-ready technology, which a lot of the other website designers do not offer. And other Hardin County web design, designers, the ones that we contracted, they did not offer the full service like the one in Louisville. And the one in Louisville, uh, offers that and their equiv- price is about equivalent to this one. So, the website design will cost nine thousand two hundred dollars. The video production is two thousand seven hundred. The annual hosting is three hundred.
Three hundred dollars?
Three hundred dollars, three hundred for, for annual. And the funding for this website will be spread proportionally across the six directorates. This is a professional service contract. This council, if you will recall, has badgered me for the last two years to get an updated website. And I have resisted spending the money, thinking we could construct one ourselves, we can't.
That's cause you still have a fresh phone.
We have done some enhancements and some updates, but it's nothing compared to what we need. We need a new website. And I intend to formalize the contract with Heartland this week, or this coming week. And I'll tell you that they have told me that it'll take a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty days, uh, to produce this. And they will have, our first product from this will be ready for us to view in less than ninety days. And what I have in mind, as soon as we get the first product, it will be on our website, it'll be, it's a closed website. And we will have it for you to take a look at, at your leisure, in the conference room, on that big TV, at any time you want to come look at it, after I tell you that it's up and ready to go.
What's the monthly maintenance cost for that?
It's not monthly, the annual maintenance cost is three hundred dollars.
So, are they doing the monthly maintenance?
No, we would, uh, Tim Jeffries, where are you? Tim Jeffries is very much involved in this.
So, he's gonna be doing all the, the daily uploads and weekly uploads?
So, Tim does all that?
Yep.
And he will coordinate that with Heartland Communications to see if the daily update, the updates that he does are according to the quality that they, they start do the site.
They're gonna train him, they're training him, yeah.
Mayor, so, are, is, you're saying the only one that basically you looked at was Heartland Communications, there was no other?
Uh, no, we, we got some quotes from, from some other ones. In fact, I have a quote, uh, uh, right here, but they don't provide the same thing that they provide.
Okay.
We, we want to have a website where you can go on your iPhone and view it.
I understand that.
We want it programmed like that.
I understand that.
And they're the only ones locally that can do that. The one in Louisville can do it, but the one in Louisville costs as much as this.
So, you only checked with two of them, just that, this one and that one in Louisville?
We checked with this one and the one in Louisville, and we checked with some lesser ones here in Hardin, in Hardin County.
And no one else was able to do it?
No one else can do what they can do.
And you don't have to go through the normal bid process, because it's a specialty?
Because, because it's a professional service, a professional service contract.
Mayor, I remember last year when Kenny Rambo came and talked to us about it, and I thought they have a very professional company, and I've worked with them before. I'm fine with it. I think it's been a long time coming.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry that I have been so stubborn about it, but, uh.
You still have a flip phone.
He's got a bag phone.
And, uh, and I, I use my computer every day.
So, just to make sure we're clear, the total for one year.
It's about eleven five.
Is twelve two, twelve thousand two hundred.
I don't think that adds up to twelve thousand two hundred.
That's what you said.
It adds up to a little less than twelve thousand.
Well, then the figures are wrong. You said ninety-two, nine thousand two hundred.
Nine thousand two hundred and twenty-seven.
And three hundred admin.
No, three hundred admin is the annual fee.
Three hundred annual, well. That has to be added in there.
Okay.
So, it'll be, and then the previous, next year, it will be just the three hundred. Okay, so this is just a setup.
A less weak track with them for something else that is caused by a change in technology that we do not foresee right now.
Can I, um, ask you a question of Tim?
Yeah.
Since you've probably got the tag.
Answer from back there, because you're, uh.
So, Tim, how, um, how interactive, uh, is that, that website? Because, I mean, just having a website that puts, you know, information in front of people's eyes is not what is most effective. What's most effective is when they can, can go on virtual tours, and they can interact with the information, they can submit forms.
The video side of it is, they're gonna make new videos, be able to, to look at different things.
Right, no, 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 I'm talking about just having a, a website before people that shows them things. I'm talking about a website that is interactive. So, you know, I can interact with it and do things with it. So, I can report something with it, I can get information, I can download forms, I can, so it's interactive, you know? I can actually accomplish work.
That's what they're working on.
Okay.
They're going, they're looking at doing, where they can submit it, submit a complaint, and then go to whichever department needs to go to.
Right.
And then, um, there're gonna be like, a list where they can, you can post your community events.
Right.
For the, the community to do, plus to have another section for city events, that you'll have your community event section to where the public can put events on there, and then it'll have to be approved by, by someone, but they can post whatever they want on there.
Right, but, yeah, right, so, I guess what I'm talking about, I'm talking about interaction. I'm talking about, I could get on there, and I can voice a complaint, and then the person at the office is gonna get that, and then I'm gonna see a response come in my email. And so, then that way, I've had an interaction with ziplo- zen, uh, uh, planning and zoning, but I didn't have to come into the office to do that. It's like a stretch. I got on the website, and I had an interaction with the city, with agencies within the city.
We've got that on the website now.
Right.
Or you can email.
You fill out the form, and an email go to Jeff downstairs, and Jeff would look at it, reply, get the answer he needs, and then email back to the people.
Okay.
A, a good, a good way to check this out is go to the Hardin County website.
The department is, is what you're saying.
Go to Hardin County's website.
Right.
Look at ours, and then look at theirs, and see what our upgrade is gonna look like, except ours will be more modern than theirs.
Uh, sir, but did you also mention in the meeting that there was gonna be a prototype for the council to be able to take a look at well before we even have the closed part? So, you can see the different pages, because we're looking at about twenty-something pages of.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight pages. So, with that being said, it'll be presented before the council, so if there's like something that we see that could probably be more interactive to make us more effective with our citizens, that'll be.
That's going to be in the conference room?
Yeah.
And you will be able to.
So, the, the input from here would also be on there, was, as it pertains to the pages on the website itself. And then, of course, it'll have the social media icons, it'll also go real-time, back and forth, um, with things that we do. Also, upcoming projects that we have, um, he went pretty, pretty detailed as far as how that's gonna look, but the council will get a chance to see, and we'll see, hey, this is something that we could probably use. This'll help citizens this way or that way, and make it more user-friendly. So, I think that input will be something that's beneficial for all of us.
So. So, I think it's a good, good deal, it seems like a good price. I don't know anything about computers. But for this year, it's twelve two, the next year, it's three hundred. So, the video, when Mr. Jeffries was talking, sounded like they would be doing the video the next year too?
Unless we need to update something or change something, then that'd be an added on to the three hundred.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a total price, so we know what we're getting into.
Well, you won't know the video price until, because they've got an idea already of what videos they're looking for. That's where they get the video price start now. So, if we need to add or change something, it depends on what needs to be added, or how long it's gonna be. The length of the video is what the price would be next time.
Okay. So, how much do we have currently budgeted for the website?
Uh, we don't have anything budgeted for the website, because I am going to all six departments and proportionally take it from what they have, uh, put in their budget for this sort of thing. So, it's coming from.
So, we won't need to do any amendments or anything, everything will be covered?
Don't need any.
Not cut anybody short.
At, at the meeting with all six directors, they're completely in favor of this and ready to, and Chance has it under control. And it, and it's already in a budget.
And you can do that through, um, Stormwater, because I'm sure they'll have some educational videos on there?
Stormwater will contribute to this because, so there's actually, instead of six, there's seven.
We're not looking to include tourism on this at all?
Uh, if we get further onto this and think that there is a need for tourism, we will bring them in. But I don't think we need to, to take any money from tourism to do this, because I think they're pretty tasked with what they have already. I don't think we need tourism to do this website. Maybe in a following year, we might, but this year, let's just get our website up, and then we'll have a link to them. With, uh, tourism already has a very good website.
So, Mayor, that, now, you're talking about a lot of different entities that, that will need to be adding to that, as you said, to the website itself, and Tim's gonna be the only one handling those particular things.
Tim is the administrator.
Okay, so he's gonna put all those things on, on a monthly basis?
More than likely weekly.
Uh, that's, I agree, that's why I'm asking the question.
Depends on what it is, close to daily, I mean.
Yep, we will keep the website up to date through Tim.
All right.
All right, with that, uh, Jim Bruce from the Water District is here. He's been here for over an hour, and he wants to talk to us about the new water tower at Mill Pond.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't put you at the beginning, Mr. Bruce, I'm sorry.
I enjoy listening to all this.
He's been smiling the whole time, thank you.
The mayor, council, and, uh, Councilor Pike, thank you for this audience. If you'll indulge me, I wanted to give you some history, some dates, because I don't think all of you have been on the council from the beginning of this topic. So, uh, to go back to two thousand and seven was our busiest year for new construction since I've been here in twenty-three years. We had an engineer.
Use the, uh, mic, please.
So, we had a, an engineer do a study, what we called the Water Storage Needs Study, because, uh, we were growing so fast, and we're concerned about, you know, the water demand and all that. So, and when they did this study, it was May two thousand and seven, and they recommended another water tank in Radcliffe. So, that's when we first found out we probably should be planning to build a new water tank. In, um, September twenty-second of fourteen, I met with Mayor Duval and kinda presented this idea. The, my board had been saying, you know, when are we gonna start on this new tank? Where, where are we, where are we gonna build it and so forth? And, uh, in my presentation to the council, I talked about the elevation, the height of the tank is critical. So, there's only a few places in Radcliffe that have that elevation. One of them happens to be in Mill Pond, the business center. So, I met with Mayor Duval September of fourteen. Uh, he asked me to provide a sketch, a drawing, and some more detail on what this tank would look like, and how big it would be, and so forth. So, I provided that to Mayor Duval in October sixteen of fourteen. And, uh, then, uh, about a year went by, and then, um, uh, I think Ma- Mayor Weaver was in office, and, uh, allowed me to come here in September eighth of fifteen and made a slide presentation. So, some of you are probably here, I have copies to leave with you of that slide presentation. And that just talks about why we need the tank, where we wanna put it, what it looks like, benefits to the city, and so forth. Um, so that was September fifteen. In the May of sixteen, we contracted with an engineer called Stan Tech to do what's called the geotechnical report. In July of sixteen, uh, Councilor Pike, uh, drafted an agreement for us to sign, so we could go on the city property, uh, dig bore holes to see how deep the bedrock was, and so forth. So, we signed that agreement on July eleven of sixteen. We actually gave Stan Tech the notice to proceed in, uh, December second of sixteen. Uh, we actually had them do three different geotech reports, two for brand-new tanks at Fort Knox, and this one in Radcliffe. So, they were actually doing three different geotech reports, so that's why it took longer than just one study. Uh, this study cost the Water District fifteen thousand sixty-six dollars, uh, for them to do this study. Uh, July, or, June fifteen of this year, we received the final geotechnical report, uh, from Stan Tech. Um, and then I met with Mayor Weaver, uh, just recently, and, uh, he said, "Come again and kinda present, uh, refresh your mind what we're asking for," and so forth. So, the geotechnical report says we absolutely can build a tank there where we would like to. Maybe the only negative is bedrock is about fifty-five feet below the surface. Uh, but that doesn't make it a unusable site, it just means we have to drill casings a lot deeper, and it adds concrete cost and rebar and so forth, so. So, we can act, we can certainly build the tank there. Uh, so my board would like to kinda go back to that subject of, um, it's a quarter of an acre, a pretty small piece of, uh, all of Mill Pond, which I think is a hundred and sixty-some acres, and, uh.
One thirty-five left.
Okay, yep. And, uh, and put that tank kinda way at the back, uh, I don't know if you call it the back property line?
It's on the edge, yeah.
Yeah, closest to Patriot Parkway, yeah. Um, and so, the tank would be visible from, certainly driving up Patriot Parkway, coming into Radcliffe, and anywhere on, almost anywhere on Joe Prather. And, of course, back when we signed the agreement, uh, you know, we, we presented the benefits to the city of, uh, we would certainly, uh, allow the city to put two logos on that tank, whatever logo you wanted, City of Radcliffe, or Mill Pond, your name. Pastor Palmer. But, uh, and then, uh.
Sign of the dove on one of them.
Sure. We have had churches ask if they could put a logo on our tanks, and we just said, "We can't, can't do that," so. And then, the other benefits, I think, maybe the biggest benefit is to the business center itself. Having, uh, water storage there, a million to a million and a half gallons, changes the dynamics of firefighting quite a bit. Uh, so, if the city were able to get any kind of industrial, uh, project there that's gonna be manufacturing, storing flammable materials, that helps them with their both insurance costs tremendously, plus it makes the site more attractive. Uh, I think when Councilor Short was on the council, he drove around, looked at some industrial parks, and called me later, and he said, "You know, everyone's got a water tank, it looks like." And I said, "Yeah, that's, that's a big deal, to have water storage so close to a, you know, large development." So, that helps the city, I think, market the site. It helps a little bit with water pressure, because we would actually build this tank a few feet higher than Lincoln Trail. So, it may, people may not notice, it might be one or two pounds better, but, uh, it also, uh, provides the, uh, ISO rating for the fire department. The more gallons you have stored for firefighting, that helps the city's rating itself for firefighting, so. So, if, I think, uh, what, what we would propose or ask is if, if the council's agreeable to let us work with, uh, Councilor Pike and draft another agreement, which sets out the terms, and we, then we would find out, you know, if the city's gonna charge us for this property, or we just make it a no-cost transfer, or if the city wants to do a, like, an option where we pay an option fee per year to keep it available, and we might have fir- write a first refusal, you know, if the city, we're gonna sell the whole property and say, "You still want the water tank site?" We could say yes or no, but. I know Mayor Weaver asked, "How soon are we gonna build this tank?" We can't really answer that, it's about a three to four million dollar project. Our water fund does not have that much in reserves. In fact, we just had to raise water rates, uh, eighteen percent this year, after ten years, keep leaving the rates the same. So, um, a few years, well, probably six years ago, we got approved for a state revolving loan fund to build the same water tank. But then we found out the state said we had to start, we had to borrow the money and start making payments, and we hadn't planned on doing that, so we kinda turned down the loan. It wasn't a grant, it wasn't free money, uh, but we can also apply for grants in the future and try to get funding for this tank. As you know, the state of Kentucky is, is pretty, uh, lean with grant money or surplus money. We haven't seen state money since the BRAC funding, which was, what, two thousand and six or seven when it first got approved, so. Uh, the other thing, the tanks that we have in Radcliffe, which is Whispering Hills, Lincoln Trail, and Longview, uh, are adequate today. They, you know, we don't have, uh, a deficit of storage, but we really don't have any extra. But the other thing that's helped us, in two thousand and seven was our best year ever. We, we put in almost four hundred new water taps, so that's four hundred new buildings in Radcliffe and the county. Uh, the last several years, we're lucky if we put in thirty or forty. So, we're doing a tenth of what we did in two thousand and seven. Two thousand and eight, of course, the recession hit, bottom dropped out, and, you know, it really hasn't recovered, so. So, our water use and demand hasn't really grown since that report was written. And, and of course, that report, you know, kinda projected growth every year similar to two thousand and seven, which has not happened, so. So, any questions?
If I remember right, when you gave this proposal before, you said there would be some storage under the tank?
Yes.
We might be able to utilize it?
Yes, it's a circular column, and, uh, that whole lower area could be, you can put a garage door. That's what we have in another tank similar, it's just like a roll-up garage door.
I'm not sure what we'd store there, but I'm sure.
Yeah.
Well, if you have to do maintenance on the grounds and things.
Or anything in, uh, Mill Pond, you know, if you had mowers, or anything you wanted to park in there, you could do that.
We can use it.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we could, that's why, I just wanted to make sure you, that's the same designer, or tank that y'all are still looking at.
Right.
Do you have a picture?
Is that in the couple's?
Yeah, I'll just give you one of these, if you don't want.
He's gonna leave those on the table.
All right, I'll just leave them up here. That's the same one, but it has a picture of the tank in there. They're probably the most common type of tank being built today. District Two built one a couple of years ago. Louisville Water has, I don't know, a dozen or more of these same tanks, so.
Now, where is the law, is the spot that this is, I'm having a hard time figuring it out.
Yeah, if you go up the Mill Pond past, uh, Ruffles, the building, or, you, old US cab, to where the trees stop on the left, and then kinda, kinda follow the tree line as far as you can go, there's another tree line. You have to walk past a cornfield.
Okay, so it'd be in the back?
Yeah, it's way, way in the back.
You can see it from the main road, but that's because it's up so high and so big, right?
Yep.
It's past where you can raise corn.
Yeah, you have to go to the very edge of the cornfield, and then walk back in the trees quite a ways, because the mayor did that with us, and.
Ticks.
Ticks, yeah.
It was a nice trip.
So, you're saying you're not sure when you would be able to build it?
Right.
Do you have any idea, three years, four years, I mean?
You know, I'm retiring next year, so I don't think we're gonna build it before I retire.
Then I'm gonna be able to name it after you, Mr. Bruce?
No, 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 don't do that. But, uh, but certainly, I think, once we get the site nailed down, then, uh, there's, there are some grant programs, both federal and state.
You'd have to have a site first, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And, and if we can't work out the site with the city, there are a few other places within, on that same ridge, uh, that we would probably talk to private property owners about, so.
Yeah, but that wouldn't help, so on the Mill Pond as much?
Yeah, I, I just think it, it's just a very common thing, the industrial parks, business centers have a storage tank on the site.
Yeah, but I don't see how that would be an issue with anything. It sounds like a logical, very good and logical place to put it, I'm glad the soil worked out.
Yeah, yep. The, uh, the two tanks at Fort Knox is, I know that's not your concern, but we're still dealing with the FAA, I guess, on, uh, the height of the tank, that we've already moved one once, and then now they're doing another study, so.
Oh, 'cause of the airfield?
Yes. We were hoping to put those out to bid this year, and then the cost of that tank, we would really know for sure what the co- our, our construction costs have really dropped in the last year. So, the three, three million, four million may, may be less than that, we, we hope, but.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we should hear something back on this, not by Tuesday, right? Bill along, next month, probably.
Yeah, that's fine, sure. It's been a long process, so appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next up is our finance director, Mr. Chance Fox, who's going to answer any questions you may have concerning the ad valorem tax ordinance.
Mayor, I found out, uh.
No.
There was, I guess, some documentation that I had submitted.
There was, I guess, some documentation that I had submitted to the city clerk prior to the, as part of the addition on the information that they get that they did not receive, which is basically my memo that summarizes, which I do each year, kind of how we got to this point. So I'll just pass that out now if that's all right.
Yeah.
I think he's having a conversation.
I did.
What am I, tightening this one or what?
I just paid the tax.
This is a similar memo that I do most years for, that summarizes the tax, property tax rate calculation. As most of you already know, that basically there's a state worksheet that generates the tax rate based off of last year's tax rate, last year's assessments, then it encompasses 2017 assessments that PVA provides to us, both for real estate and tangible assessments. Those criterias, as you build the worksheet, basically produces a tax rate. And the tax rate as computed, also referred to as the compensating rate, was generated, was computed to be .160 or $1.60 per thousand, 16 cents per hundred, depending on how you look at it. That rate as computed is just slightly higher than the tax rates that the council has adopted over the last, I think, maybe, what, five years now? Looks like the tax rate's been fixed since 2011 at .159, and that's on page two of the memo there that I gave you. So there really hasn't been any increase in property taxes since 2010, so seven years now, depending on what the council chooses to do. But you can see by my asterisks that I put there beside the adopted rate that the council has done. In most of those years, the tax rate was computed and computed correctly to be higher than what the council ultimately chose to do, which is perfectly fine. The council, I think, chose to accept a rate that was no higher than the previous year. Even though the compensating rate was computed to be higher, I think the council chose to keep it the same so that taxpayers would not see a tax increase. So this year is no different. The tax rate was computed to be higher once again, and again, it's slightly higher. Basically, it's a penny on a hundred. So you've got the historical perspective. You can also see, I do a little synopsis there on the bottom of that, that talks about the homestead and disability exemptions for those people aged 65 or older or disability. You know, they can apply for those at PVA, and you get about a 37, you get $37,000 assessment off of your assessed property as a tax break. Well, as the population continues to age, you can see what's happened there, we, the amount of dollars that we continue to lose each year off of our assessments just because of the makeup of the demographics here in the community. And again, I just add that for additional information. The second part, I talked about the property tax rate or the ad valorem rate. We also have the tangible rate that you all approve by ordinance. That tax rate is actually proposed or computed to be lower than last year. Last year, it was .202. This year, it's computed to be .196, so that's about 6 cents per hundred lower. You also, and I always mention this...
Do you have that written down for us?
Pardon me? That's in that second paragraph, or actually, at the bottom of the first paragraph. The council, just for perspective, the council obviously can accept a rate higher than the compensating rate or the computing rate. You can accept a rate up to 4% higher. The only thing you'd have to do is have a public hearing. And you can accept any rate between 1 to 4%, should you so choose to do that. And if you so choose to do that, that second paragraph there on my, on page one, just gives you some dollar figures on what the impact would be as a result. That was my memo to the mayor's office and to the council. And then I did, just for viewing purposes, I did, you see a draft of what an ordinance might look like with the computed rates only, not what the council may choose to do. It's just what it would look like if you accepted the computed rates.
So why would you waste the paper on that, I wonder, until we discuss the rates?
For the reasons that I just stated, that the council may want to see a visual of what that would look like, and I'm basing that on the last six years where the council has remained, has kept the tax rates the same. I just assume that the council might want to see what that would look like, should you continue with the, with what's transpired over the past six years.
Okay. My one question that I have is the compensating rate, that already took into effect the homestead exemption, correct?
Correct, yes, it was.
So, because when you look at the rate increasing in the compensating rate, it sounds like we don't have, the property values are going down instead of up, but I just want to clarify that with the homestead exemption being about 55, well, so...
It's 37,000.
55 million.
Yeah, 55, 55 million, and actually, we did have an increase, I would think.
Property tax assessments generally, I think, last year or the year before, memory serves me, it actually went down. But traditionally, your tax assessments do go up a little bit each year. Even if you have stagnant growth, you still have reassessments done by PVA periodically. So in most years, you might, you still have some growth, when I say growth, let me clarify that, in most years, you still have higher assessments, but that doesn't necessarily mean you had more growth. But in this particular tax year, the assessments were higher for 2017 than they were in 2016.
Right, because we did have growth with different businesses and things coming to town.
So with that, Mayor, just...
Any questions, Mr. Chance Fox?
Is this only a chance for Tuesday as well?
Will be, yeah.
Yeah, and I probably do need to add, just to clarify, yeah, typically, at the end of September, we issue tax bills. So my vision would be that at the council meeting, there would be, next Tuesday would be a first reading, and then we would need to have a called meeting sometime shortly thereafter to do a second reading.
So I guess to save time, we need to quickly kind of decide, do we want to go with what we have done in the past, take the 159, go with Chance's rate of the 160, or do an increase?
Well, just, let me just clarify, that's not my rate. I simply computed the rate as the state showed.
Well, I mean, that's what you got on, that's what you got on the proposed.
Let me clarify that. I don't want the paper that Chance Fox proposed anything, I just give you the figures.
That's on the proposed ordinance, the proposed ordinance rate, let me clarify.
Thank you.
But see, we didn't even get this all until right now, so it's kind of hard to...
It's from .159 to .160.
I'm good with the .159.
What that would mean in realistic terms, if a homeowner in Radcliffe had a home assessed at $100,000, I would say most homes in Radcliffe, on an average, are probably assessed somewhere in the 140,000 range, that it's a dollar per year from 159 last year to a dollar, to a dollar 60 this year. So most homeowners would pay a dollar, a dollar 10 cents more per year.
Well, I guess...
Just for perspective.
Just to make it a quicker conversation, does anybody feel that we need to increase it by a percent other than what was compensated, computed?
Before you mull that over in your individual minds, you ought to be aware of what's going to happen with KERS and CERS. And if this special session in October sticks with what the governor wants to do, we may be looking for over $800,000 in next fiscal year, and in subsequent years, pay off the deficit of about $35 billion in CERS and KERS. So you might want to just kind of think about that as you're deciding whether you need to do anything with an extra penny.
That's what I mean, we were just given this right now, so it's hard to just sit here and say, takes a few minutes to...
It's only .16 from .19, .159. Anybody else in the council have anything to say about this?
I mean, you know, eventually, we're going to have to make some tough decisions.
Yes, you are.
I thought that we have been doing all along, whether we go for it or not, it's still a tough decision.
Yeah, they're always tough decisions.
So you can, you can try that, but that's a tough decision.
And we've made tough decisions, and I have.
No, I'm just saying, you know, if we ask, there's no one out there in the public going to say, "Raise, raise taxes." I'm just saying, we're elected to make these tough decisions, whether they're popular or not. But I do know, and every one of y'all know, that every year, the budget's getting tighter. You know, we're giving raises and, which we should be, our employees deserve raises and everybody deserves raises, so we're talking about a dollar, what'd you say, a dollar 60 on average a year?
Yeah, it'd be, well, it's a dollar 60 on a thousand.
On a thousand?
I mean, that's what the rate means, 16 cents on a hundred.
A dollar 60 increase, that's...
No, no, that's, no, no, that's not the correct...
So it's a what increase?
Penny on, it's a penny on a hundred, for every hundred dollars of assessed value, a penny.
So a $100,000 home would be?
Little over a dollar.
And it raises us additionally, no, that's if we take the 4%. Yeah, that's just going out to compute it right, right there.
Well, we're going to give it to you on Tuesday, have to give it to you on Tuesday in order to get it in on time and do a special call session to prove it, so.
So you're going to present it with the 160, .160?
Unless I hear a loud, loud negative cry to leave it at 1.159. Okay, it's going to be .160. Moving on to the next, we just raised a couple hundred dollars. Moving on to the next...
Well, it hasn't been approved yet.
Our planning official, Murray Weiner, is going to give an ordinance proposal amendment, and then he's going to, he's going to give you an overview of that, and then he'll answer questions. And we talked about it in my office for quite some time today, and I told Murray that it can be summarized and understood very easily. So let's see if you can do that, Murray.
Okay, I'm up for the challenge. On September 7, 2017, the Radcliffe Planning Commission recommended approval of an amendment to the zoning ordinance and development regulations, and they recommended approval of the following articles that are listed under item 7 on your agenda. The purpose of that amendment is in relation to the zoning ordinance, Article 27, conservation zones. And if you look at Exhibit 1, it shows all, several polygons on that exhibit, and they're in green, and those polygons denote conservation zones. Those polygons were established in 1984 with the zoning ordinance, and they were based on the most accurate information at the time denoting sinkhole floodplains, for the most part, natural constraints on properties. In 2010, the City of Radcliffe commissioned a study in conjunction with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and it was a sinkhole floodplain study and studying carstopography. If you look at Exhibit 2, it shows blue polygons from that study that have been incorporated in our GIS system, as shown on that map. And if you'll notice, a lot of those polygons coincide with the locations of the polygons in Exhibit 1. They're a little bit larger, but essentially, it's the same information, but maybe a little more. The reason why we're proposing to essentially repeal the conservation zone chapter of the zoning ordinance and any references within other chapters is due to the fact that there's very stringent development regulations in the zoning ordinance that relate to those conservation zones, those green polygons. Our conservation zone standards state that you can, 95% of those zones cannot be developed with a structure. You can only develop 5% of those zones with a structure. The fact of the matter is, due to the fact that those sinkhole floodplain polygons coincide with the conservation zone polygons, it leads to redundancy and development restrictions. You can develop within the sinkhole floodplains that is governed by the Code of Ordinances, our flood damage prevention ordinance governs development within those. You can develop in those with development restrictions. What those are based on is accurate contour information. So each one of those follows a contour line that was established by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and that's referred to as the base flood elevation, which is referenced in our flood damage prevention ordinance and the Code of Ordinances.
So the standards have changed from conservation to flood zone?
Pretty much. And they're in accordance with a model ordinance that we adopted, that Kentucky Division of Water essentially drafted, and we adopted a version of it very close to what they had. And of course, Kentucky Division of Water regulates floodplain development within the state on a statewide basis. So what we're doing is replacing the conservation zone regulations with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study, although we've been enforcing both all along. But it removes an extra layer of regulation that is based on outdated information, and it should assist with development activities. It'll be a lot less cumbersome for developers to try to build with on those, within those properties. They'll still have restrictions, but not to the level to where it's just not worth their time to develop on those properties.
I'm not getting a thing of what you're saying. What, what are we wanting to do?
Take Exhibit 1...
Away.
And throw it away, and along with that, Chapter 27.
And what's the reasoning for that?
Because everything on Exhibit 1 is included on Exhibit 2.
Plus extra.
Look, look at the Quiggins.
Yeah, I see all that, I got all that.
See how much bigger the Quiggins is?
Yeah, I got all that.
Okay.
But what are we doing with the, as Murray's talking about with the building on those?
The conservation zone is an overlay. So you have your property, whether it's R2, whatever it is, and then the conservation zone is an overlay that fits over that.
Right.
And basically, except for about 5%, you can't build in the conservation zone.
Right.
So we are getting rid of the conservation zone, totally getting rid of it. And in its place, we have these other regulations that basically deal with how to develop in a flood property. So it's going to free up property for development that isn't free now.
Okay.
But will also allow for safe development in, in property that previously we couldn't build in.
Under the flood zone.
Exactly, under the flood zone regulations that are based on better data, better maps, better topography studies, GL studies, all the things that Murray mentioned.
The other thing that you need to take into consideration, you don't need to, but it's information, if you look at the Quiggins floodplain, after the Quiggins retention basins are finished, this map will shrink. This blue part will shrink after Toby does all of his studies and accounts for the water not flooding there anymore because of the basin. But that'll, that'll be a while.
Oh, right, right.
That'll be a while, but you will eventually see that.
Okay, so anybody that has like sinkholes in their yards and that sort of thing, it's really not going to make a difference, except it would free up, they might, could build a little closer to it?
They can build a little closer to the throat than they can today.
Under certain, certain regulations, yeah. They have to meet certain standards.
But we, we really need to do it because we have better data, better updates, and we need to free up this property.
Right.
And then citizens are free to, you know, as long as they can develop it under the law, they're, they're free to either develop it or not, but basically, right now, they can't.
And are we required? My last question, I guess, would be a... My last question, I guess, would be, are we required to have the conservation zones because?
No.
No. That was adopted in the zoning ordinance in nineteen eighty-four because that was the best way they had of dealing with these properties, based on the best information at the time. We have better information now.
But in the zoning standards that we have adopted, there's nothing that says you have to have conservation zones?
No, that's our own legislation. We can get rid of it.
All right, got it.
Okay, any other questions about that? Then I have a couple of more things. One, as I just passed out.
Thank you, Murray.
Thank you.
Thank you, Murray.
Hey, Murray, in this political climate where we're in, can you kind of restrain from using the words repeal and replace?
I'll keep that for future reference.
I kind of took an offense to that.
Thank you, Murray. You have a draft of the Radcliffe Hiring Policy Statement that I just handed out. All of the directors have reviewed that and agreed with the draft. If any council member has something to add, please contact me. And this draft, with or without additional input from you, will become an executive order, and I hope to do that as early as next week. Okay, and then the only other thing that I have is, you remember the guy, Mr. Shabatsky, Paul Shabatsky, that came in to see us about motorcycle signs on the highways?
Yeah.
That was in late two thousand and fifteen. And we authorized signs in Hart, in Radcliffe, and all, Harten County did too, in two thousand and sixteen. The accident rate in two thousand and sixteen was sixty-four accidents in Harten County and three fatalities. And since those signs have gone up, the accident rate was thirty-six so far in two thousand and seventeen and no fatalities. So, you know, I pass one of those signs every morning and every evening. And I think, yeah, you know, you do need to share the road a little bit. Look in your rearview mirror and see if there's a motorcycle behind you. So, I think that has worked, and he came in to congratulate us for doing that. And with that, we can just formally quit because we don't have to ask for a motion to adjourn. Yes?
My name's Kent Miles, and I recently got Democratic appointing. And I worked with Mike Malaski, D-Dy. He was the guy that tried to get the bus system here in Radcliffe.
Mike who?
Malarky.
Malarky.
He passed away?
Yeah, I know, I know who Mike Malarky is.
Yeah, well, he had the ball on red. And I happen to be along with the guy that attacked. Stand up.
My name is Joe Redd, and I'm the director of TAC.
I know who you are, Joe Redd.
Joe, I'm just here to support...
Yeah, and I still wanted to go on with the ball, but I at least had to introduce myself to who I am, what I'm planning on doing. And we were talking the last four or five months about trying to reconnect on this issue, see if we could get a bus system entered, went to assistance, uh, TAC. And we took this time to come here to speak on it and hope we can get a listening there. We also have a problem that we never have a, what did you call that thing that you called it?
Quorum. Oh, no, uh, the mayor's on our board, so that's, it's helpful now.
I can tell you that Michael Malarky was one of the most aggressive people when it came to public transportation that I have ever met in my life. Tonya Seabrook came to me right after Michael died and asked that I do a legislative citation to present to his family. If you read the obituary, you found that Michael had two sisters, one in Minnesota and one in California. Some time today, and I told Murray that it can be summarized and understood very easily. So, let's see if you can do that, Murray.
Okay, I'm up for the challenge.
Okay.
On September seventh, twenty seventeen, the Radcliffe Planning Commission recommended approval of an amendment to the zoning ordinance and development regulations. And they recommended approval of the following articles that are listed under item seven on your agenda. The purpose of that amendment is in relation to the zoning ordinance, article twenty-seven, conservation zones. And if you look at exhibit one, it shows all, several polygons on that exhibit, and they're in green, and those polygons denote conservation zones. Those polygons were established in nineteen eighty-four with the zoning ordinance. And they were based on the most accurate information at the time denoting sinkhole floodplains, for the most part, natural constraints on properties. In twenty-ten, the city of Radcliffe commissioned a study in conjunction with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And it was a sinkhole floodplain study and studying car stopography. If you look at exhibit two, it shows blue polygons from that study that have been incorporated in our GIS system, as shown on that map. And if you'll notice, a lot of those polygons coincide with the locations of the polygons in exhibit one. They're a little bit larger, but essentially, it's the same information, but maybe a little more. The reason why we're proposing to essentially repeal the conservation zone chapter of the zoning ordinance and any references within other chapters is due to the fact that there's very stringent development regulations in the zoning ordinance that relate to those conservation zones, those green polygons. Our conservation zone standards state that you can, ninety-five percent of those zones cannot be developed with a structure. You can only develop five percent of those zones with a structure. The fact of the matter is, due to the fact that those sinkhole floodplain polygons coincide with the conservation zone polygons, it leads to redundancy and development restrictions. You can develop within the sinkhole floodplains that is governed by the code of ordinances, or flood damage prevention ordinance governs development within those. You can develop in those with development restrictions. What those are based on is accurate contour information. So, each one of those follows a contour line that was established by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And that's referred to as the base flood elevation, which is referenced in our flood damage prevention ordinance and the code of ordinances.
So, the standards have changed from conservation to flood zone?
Pretty much. And they're in accordance with a model ordinance that we adopted, that Kentucky Division of Water essentially drafted. And we adopted a version of it very close to what they had. And of course, Kentucky Division of Water regulates floodplain development within the state on a statewide basis. So, what we're doing is replacing the conservation zone regulations with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study, although we've been enforcing both all along. But it removes an extra layer of regulation that is based on outdated information. And it should assist with development activities. It'll be a lot less cumbersome for developers to try to build within those properties. They'll still have restrictions, but not to the level to where it's just not worth their time to develop on those properties.
I'm not getting a thing of what you're saying. I'm, what, what are we wanting to do?
Take exhibit one...
Away.
And throw it away, and along with that, chapter twenty-seven.
And what's the reasoning for that?
Because everything on exhibit one is included on exhibit two.
Plus extra.
Look at the Quiggins.
Yeah, I see all that, I got all that.
See how much bigger the Quiggins is?
Yeah, I got all that.
Okay.
But what are we doing with the, as Murray's talking about with the building on those?
The conservation zone is an overlay. So, you have your property, whether it's R2, whatever it is. And then the conservation zone is an overlay that fits over that.
Right.
Basically, except for about five percent, you can't build in the conservation zone. So, we are getting rid of the conservation zone, totally getting rid of it. And in its place, we have these other regulations that basically deal with how to develop in a flood property. So, it's going to free up property for development that isn't free now. But will also allow for safe development in property that previously we couldn't build in.
Under the flood zone.
Exactly, under the flood zone regulations that are based on better data, better maps, better topography studies, GL studies, all the things that Murray mentioned.
The other thing that you need to take into consideration, you don't really need to, but it's information. If you look at the Quiggins floodplain, after the Quiggins retention basins are finished, this map will shrink. This blue part will shrink after Toby does all of his studies and accounts for the water not flooding there anymore because of the basin. But that'll be a while.
Oh, right, right.
That'll be a while, but you will eventually see that.
Okay, so anybody that has like sinkholes in their yards and that sort of thing, it's really not going to make a difference, except it would free up, they might could build a little closer to it?
They can build a little closer to the throat than they can today.
Under certain regulations. They have to meet certain standards.
But we really need to do it because we have better data, better updates, and we need to free up this property.
Right.
And then citizens are free to, you know, as long as they can develop it under the law, they're free to either develop it or not, but basically, right now, they can't.
And are we required? My last question, I guess, would be, are we required to have the conservation zones because?
No.
No. That was adopted in the zoning ordinance in nineteen eighty-four because that was the best way they had of dealing with these properties, based on the best information at the time. We have better information now.
But in the zoning standards that we have adopted, there's nothing that says you have to have conservation zones?
No, that's our own legislation. We can get rid of it.
All right, got it.
Okay, any other questions about that? Then I have a couple of more things. One, as I just passed out.
Thank you, Murray.
Thank you.
Thank you, Murray.
Hey, Murray, in this political climate where we're in, can you kind of restrain from using the words repeal and replace?
I'll keep that for future reference.
I kind of took an offense to that.
Thank you, Murray. You have a draft of the Radcliffe Hiring Policy Statement that I just handed out. All of the directors have reviewed that and agreed with the draft. If any council member has something to add, please contact me. And this draft, with or without additional input from you, will become an executive order, and I hope to do that as early as next week. Okay, and then the only other thing that I have is, you remember the guy, Mr. Shabatsky, Paul Shabatsky, that came in to see us about motorcycle signs on the highways?
Yeah.
That was in late two thousand and fifteen. And we authorized signs in Hart, in Radcliffe, and all, Harten County did too, in two thousand and sixteen. The accident rate in two thousand and sixteen was sixty-four accidents in Harten County and three fatalities. And since those signs have gone up, the accident rate was thirty-six so far in two thousand and seventeen and no fatalities. So, you know, I pass one of those signs every morning and every evening. And I think, yeah, you know, you do need to share the road a little bit. Look in your rearview mirror and see if there's a motorcycle behind you. So, I think that has worked, and he came in to congratulate us for doing that. And with that, we can just formally quit because we don't have to ask for a motion to adjourn. Yes?
My name's Kent Miles, and I recently got Democratic appointing. And I worked with Mike Malaski, D-Dy. He was the guy that tried to get the bus system here in Radcliffe.
Mike who?
Malarky.
Malarky.
He passed away?
Yeah, I know, I know who Mike Malarky is.
Yeah, well, he had the ball on red. And I happen to be along with the guy that attacked. Stand up.
My name is Joe Redd, and I'm the director of TAC.
I know who you are, Joe Redd.
Joe, I'm just here to support...
Yeah, and I still wanted to go on with the ball, but I at least had to introduce myself to who I am, what I'm planning on doing. And we were talking the last four or five months about trying to reconnect on this issue, see if we could get a bus system entered, went to assistance, uh, TAC. And we took this time to come here to speak on it and hope we can get a listening there. We also have a problem that we never have a, what did you call that thing that you called it?
Quorum. Oh, no, uh, the mayor's on our board, so that's, it's helpful now.
I can tell you that Michael Malarky was one of the most aggressive people when it came to public transportation that I have ever met in my life. Tonya Seabrook came to me right after Michael died and asked that I do a legislative citation to present to his family. If you read the obituary, you found that Michael had two sisters, one in Minnesota and one in California, and a dog. That was his extended family. And Michael was a little over-aggressive sometimes. But we wrote a citation that gave to his sisters that didn't talk that much about his over-aggressiveness, but thanked him for everything he did for Harten County in the way of trying to move public transportation forward.
Passion.
Is that right?
Passion.
Passion. Yes, he had passion. I used that word.
Doug tells Ryan, I'm here always available for your questions, to answer questions if you have questions about how we can extend better public transportation to our Radcliffe in the future. I'm not, I haven't been prepared right now.
Well, chances of you getting a public transportation system are very, very low because it requires the city of Radcliffe, Blingrove, Elizabetown, and Harten County government to agree on how to fund it. And it's been about fifteen years, and there's been no agreement yet. So, good luck on your quest.
Okay, just to let you know also, along with working with the rest of the people up here that are part of Democratic appointing, I joined like way back in June or May. And I took him on because my good friend introduced me to him. I got all this stuff that he had at one time. And I told him, yes, he was always aggressive, but at the same time, we were planning on him being bad cop and me getting good cop. Now, I'm just set for being good cop. And I do plan on keeping this, the fight, fight. I did talk to his sisters, and they do know me because I was there. And I was introduced by all people, TAC. And I also wanted to be a representative where we can have a quorum. But they had to go by way of view, to get to be a quorum, on TAC. And other things, I have already talked to the other people of the other counties you've mentioned. And they're interested in seeing what I can come up with. Can I get you to be interested in what I can come up with?
I would be interested in listening to what you have to say, and then we'll talk about how you're going to fund it.
Yeah, I'm working on that one too.
Okay.
I have some friends up there, and they don't know me because I came from Missouri, but I'm from the show.
Makes you pretty stubborn, doesn't it?
Not disturbing, Mike.
Watch it.
But I became a good friend of mine. I was his...
Not from Illinois.
Yeah, so I'm here now, here to stay. I've been here for about four years, but I just got on board with a couple of those people that's up there, you know. And I just wanted to know who I was, and we can talk, and hope you can give me a little time.
Hello? Just make an appointment, come in, and we'll talk.
All right.
All right? Then I'll talk to the city council on your behalf.
Okay, okay.
I would definitely do this.
Okay.
I'd like to say the thirtieth of September is our kids' day at the Calvin Center. We're still looking for people for the Dunkin' Boo, if anybody's interested. Well, I'm just putting it out there, it's...
You can have comments. This is important, works out.
Is it a cigarette?
Okay, move over, Mr. ...
She wants to be seen.
Just want to let you all know that on this coming Saturday at ten a.m. to two p.m. at North Harden High School, please come out to the College Career Trade Fair, featuring door prizes and all kinds of goodies, all the colleges, the universities, as well as trade schools, tech schools, as well as a parents-only forum from one p.m. to two. Come out and hear all the great things that we have, courtesy of the city of Radcliffe, hosted by me, Councilwoman Tonya Seabrook. Come on in.
Come on in.
Let me add one more thing. Also on Saturday, at about six o'clock in the morning, Dottie and Bob Moore will be right out here on the parking lot. And they are the people who are the glue that holds together the, the community yard sale. I mean, they are super volunteers for things like this. And we'll probably have a yard sale booth all the way up and down here. And it's first come, first served, it doesn't cost any money. And if you have a truck and trailer and you want to bring something on a trailer, it's down in front of Calvin Community Center, we give you two spaces to do. First come, first served, the spaces are gone, they're gone.
So you can leave it attached to your?
They, that's the only one that leaves it attached. If you're pulling a trailer with all your stuff on it, you can leave it attached and you have two of the spaces.
That's good.
Is anything else?
And the weather's supposed to be nice for this weekend, so that'll help with that.
I hope it is, I've got a bunch of stuff I want to get rid of. Wish I would've given it away.
You're gonna give it away?
Yeah, absolutely.
The NAACP Freedom Fund banquet will be this weekend at six-thirty and the Judge.
E.C. three.
E.C. three, thank you, E.C. three. And the speaker will be Judge Olu Stevens this year.
Very good. Camera still rolling there? Are we ready to shut the camera off or does? The camera goes off? Yes, that was last weekend.
Gospel in the Park, this Sunday, six o'clock, free food, free music, come on out. City Park North, six-thirty, six o'clock, I'm sorry, six.
And that's on the seventeenth, Sunday?
This Sunday, every Sunday evening in September.
Let's go home.
All right, let's do it.